... Pursuit to requirements of the NJSTA 10-4. And 2012, we have a notice of this meeting. And how the Florida City of New York has been given by November of January 2012. Scheduled to the newspaper's declaration with the county units designated to receive such notice and by closely 2012 meetings scheduled in the however the day or officially before and further by filing a 2012 meeting schedule and annual date of January 3, 2013 with the offer of the city quit. Roll call.
Mr. Anko?
Yeah.
Mr. Capitell?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Morales Vazquez?
Here.
Mr. Pinzol?
Here.
Mr. Shan?
Here.
Shan will follow.
Our session. That's most of the meeting. Many of the regular meetings have to be set.
A second.
All the favor?
Hi.
The post.
A second.
All the favor?
Hi.
The post.
This is a system or something?
Well, we did change. We changed all of it.
Communication?
Well, personally, it's from the housing authority insurance group part. There's a facsimile certificate I recently got, so low loss ratio reward. Actually, I also get a return on dividend check like that early in the year, but just means that our loss ratio is at a certain level. This is a recognition of that. And then the next is the proposed meeting dates going forward, starting January 3, 2013. Well, that's already been established. We're gonna have a meeting in February on the 11th, March on the 11th, April on the 8th, Monday on the 13th, May on the 13th, Monday, June 10th, Monday, July 8th, Monday, August of, August 12th is deleted, September, and then you have decisions that we'll always make in October, November. And I believe those decisions are voted upon at the annual meeting.
Right, yeah.
So this is just for the information. The annual meeting, Thursday, January 3, will be held at...
Brucena.
And then there's a...
Where we went last year.
It'll be in a room, right? You see, there's a room in the back.
In terms of the alternate dates for October, November, don't we usually do the first, um, is it the first?
Yeah, no, yes.
We usually do the first Monday, right?
Which would be October the 7th. You either have the 7th or the 14th, just in case.
Right.
It's just to put it on there, just in case you can't make it. But if, we try to do the one that we print out, like November the 4th.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we usually pick that.
Or the 18th or the 7th, or October 4th or 7th. If not the 7th, it has to be the 21st, but whatever days it comes when it takes, we'll put that on the annual meeting. I just, we want to give it out, who you have.
On October 4th, we had an opening house, I think, the 2nd of September. The Housing Authority officially opened the Family Success Center located at the Mad Black Manor community room. This is collaborative, collaborative agreement between the Vanguard Leaks and Haze. This is actually a three-year grant that we got on special submission, and we're gonna help the city residents of Mad Black Manor and some city that lives with people who want to address a variety of problems and issues. We're very excited about this program. Additionally, in October, staff attended, did a presentation and attended a city council meeting to articulate the housing authority's role, what we will be doing, can do or cannot do in Oakwood Plaza redevelopment project. The point being that we are participating with the owners of Oakwood Plaza to fund and start the first redevelopment project, which would be an 86-unit building. So we will have additional 23 public housing units in that building. The rest of the units will be funded by the existing Section 8 certificates of vouchers that the residents have. So, you know, we went, we went over there, we kinda, you know, got us some issues and, you know, so we did all that, at least. I guess everybody knows Hurricane Sandy landed on October 29th. It was a busy time for the housing authority. As always, the staff came through and, you know, people did what they had to do. For the most part, there were minimal complaints. I will say that most of our buildings were down for an extensive time period. Mad Black Manor had no power for five days. All the power, Kennedy Arms and O'Donnell Dempsey actually had no power for 10 days. Mad Black was five, for 10 days. The generators did power some of the hallway lights, as well as industrial buildings, as well as minimal elevator use, but there was, of course, not heat and hot water. There was some heat and hot water sporadically at O'Donnell Dempsey. Fort Leonard was out for three days, and 205 First Street was out for six days. And I got a glorious telephone call on a Saturday morning from an owner, which was good, that her lights were back on, so it was good, because we needed, we needed, uh, we needed to have that district up and running, because we had an election set up for 205. We had 250.
250.
250, so, you know, that came in at a good time. We made arrangements to have hot meals served at the sites that weren't cut back on after that date. O'Donnell, Kennedy, and Farley, they went well. I'll cover the damages first. There is, there's a piece up on the elevator. Nobody's gonna know it down at 205 First Street. There's a backup battery that apparently shorted out. I wasn't very happy about that, because it's very expensive to replace, but it has to be, it has to be replaced, very expensive. I'm new on the phone today with the, you know, only the guy that put the elevator in to make the replacement, so apparently he's gonna charge a premium to do it. This is a battery that when the elevator, when the power goes off, it will at least guide the elevators down to the first floor where they'll settle. And open, and open.
Right.
You gotta have a battery. Why the battery shorted out? Because you'd think that the battery would not short out in that type of circumstances. I don't get it, but...
It's not warranted, it's not...
Yeah, it's a 90-day warranty. It's a circus. So, let's see, I think we better get stuck on that.
Has anyone attempted to decide why it shorted out? Because there may be a design defect in the specification of that battery, if it shouldn't have been specified, or the battery may not have been built appropriately.
Well, sure. We had a conversation again, we didn't have a, you know, we got a, yeah, he was kinda like, we had him on speakerphone, 7:00 to 4 o'clock. I'll probably ask Jean to contact you to discuss that, because we didn't really get into that, you know? We asked him, if the battery was designed to assist the building and the elevators in the case of a power outage, then why would the battery short out when there's a power outage? I know it's...
What's the purpose?
Yeah, what is the whole purpose?
This is for the batteries?
Take it for a new one is $8,000, just so you know.
This is for the newer batteries?
Was it brand new, it's the first time, first time the building had, that it would've been used?
Yeah, that building's, what, two years old?
Two years old.
Oh, they had to have a one, two, a year, maybe half.
Yeah, so, that was, that was interesting to say, at least. Well, we'll, we'll keep you updated on that. Then we had some, we had some roof repairing done at the community center here at Mad Black Manor, as well as, we had to tarp off or do some, some patching at 158 First Street.
Is that from the storm?
That's from the storm, yeah. That's from the storm. And then, I don't know if anybody saw it, Mad Black Manor community has a metal roof, it's on its sheets, so some of that ripped off. That'll cost about $6,000 to replace. That could've been a lot worse, but it looks, it looks worse, because the metal sheets are just laying down on the ground. Okay. To get to the big-ticket item, there was a, the roof at Farley Tower is kinda like blew back. It's a PVC rubber roof, it was a real nightmare, it kinda blew back. We did get somebody to go out there, I think, on the first Tuesday, not the first Tuesday, but the 30th, or Tuesday after that. They maybe started just before Election Day, so he did about $8,000 worth of repair to pull the roof back. But it looks like a third of that roof is damaged. Roof was, roof was put in in 2000... 2002. That's the warranty on the roof. It was interesting. To do a permanent repair, it's gonna cost about $80,000. And there is a warranty for 20 years with no dollar limit. And there's a rider under warranty that covers wind speeds up to and including 90 miles an hour now. And what that means, and what's the winds.
Have you checked your insurance policies, whether you're covered for any of this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're covered. Yeah, we should be.
And, or FEMA for anything that's not covered?
Yeah, we're gonna submit to everybody, yes, we'll submit to everybody. Now, I would like to have some of the roof covered by a warranty, if possible, but who invests in that? So that was the major damage. Some of the things that we did before the storm, because it was forecasted pretty heavily, all the generators were tested, and just so you know, all of the generators at each of the, you see the buildings that have them, they actually run for half-hour every week, you know, a testimony. So, we also sent out letters to all of the tenants on the 25th before the storm, and giving some, some prep ideas. We did that in English and Spanish. During, when the storm hit, you know, at every complex, staff went to every apartment to check on the tenants. We checked on people who needed oxygen, you know, charging. We checked on people at Mad Black Manor who had the tendency to try to heat departments with the stove burning. If you don't do that right, you can, you can have CO2 poisoning. We had a lot of participation, helping the Red Cross, blankets and food. We were able to get the, the on-call electrician actually came in and he rigged or juiced up the community rooms at Kennedy Arms and Farley Tower, so that the election's gonna be held. So he went over there, Election Day, you know, he had the residents down in the lobby, because that's where he spent most of the time, and he had the election. He had quite a few lights on there, so it went off pretty well, so, so we got to that pretty well. So we listened to our FEMA claims, and we got, because we, the generators run diesel fuel, and that was at a premium, we, the county couldn't handle all of our needs, but the, the mayor was able to get us some diesel fuel, so we were able to get these a few run generators the whole time, so, none of that, a big deal. So that's, that's, that's basically, there's a, we handed out a, the FEMA bulletin to all residents, Section 8 residents, and below Section 8 residents, so that's, that's basically where we're at. We're going to, I guess going forward, look at some type of generator system that would heat and light at least the community rooms at the sites, so that you, if that was done, I think we can do that, it's gonna cost some money, then, you know, all seniors could come downstairs, I mean, stay downstairs anyway, you know, and take advantage of heat and lighting in the community rooms, or some backstop, so, that's the status of the storm. Any questions?
That's good. I mean, I want to commend, you know, the executive director and deputy director, and all the staff, as they were, at the different sites, they were there, helping out, doing what they could, you know, to help out the residents, and, you know, I know the food, they provided food, like Bill said, and things like that. They did a great job. They're trying to advocate, you know, whether it was with public service or anyone else, you know, to try to get the power restored and what have you. I know they did a lot of that. So, so I want to, you know, commend you guys, and thank you guys for the work that you tried to do, and I'm glad to hear, though, also, that we're gonna look into the future, you know, developing a plan, so we could then have a backup system, because I think, as we see the climate changes that we're facing, I mean, we're, we're seeing tremendous snowstorms, and we're seeing days where it gets extremely hot, and we're seeing these kind of storms now, like Sandy, and, you know, and that. And, and as we move forward, I think it's important for us as, as a housing authority to have some plan in place, so we can support, you know, our seniors in all the buildings that we have, in the event of power outages or any other kind of storm that, you know, might come through.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta look at it. I think it was scary, you know?
Yeah, very scary.
I mean, I can't, you know, I knew what it was, and we go into the building, and there's no heat, because I'd had it at the house, but, you know, somebody, there's like 50 seniors sitting in the lobby, and I was like, and they actually had, you know, nobody was really sour about it, really interested, like, you're, you're...
I think what did it was, when these guys came with the food and stuff, I think that made a difference, because a lot of them, like, you know, I got a lot of calls, some calls, and they were saying that, you know, they had no heat and stuff like that. And then they called me, like, all excited, "Oh, Mr. Jones came and he brought food", and, and it made a difference. It made a difference, so that should be commended.
Took my hat off to Pastor Bartley, because he was, he got into that.
Yeah.
I think Pastor White had, he was on, who was that, he was on? Pastor Bartley did a lot, he did a lot, really did. He, he came out. Rod Spearman, obviously, you know, he's been in situations like this, so he knew exactly what was going on, he was there all the time, you know, so, and we got through it. Tomorrow, if anybody's around, we're gonna have a teeny work celebration Thanksgiving luncheon, in that room right there, 12 o'clock.
Where?
Right here.
Oh, okay. Well, for the staff?
Yes.
So, Bill, do you think, because unfortunately, this looks like all these weather changes and these weather patterns are becoming part of the north, like last year, Hurricane I rain, this year, Sandy, Frankenstorm, what else do we have? Well, Frankenstorm, the nor'easter. Wasn't there two last year? Yeah, I think there was. So, I think that we should probably have, and I'm, maybe one exists, like a disaster plan, and maybe we can reexamine it and see what changes, possible changes, we should make for all types of different disasters. I think this is a good opportunity for each and every one of us, personally and professionally, to try to address these issues and kinda prepare for them, you know, and learn from them.
We do have one. It was prepared a number of years ago, probably after 2011, I mean, 9, whatever, I forget the year. 9/11. It's been updated in spots, you know, we'll take another look at it, but we do have it. A lot of it relies on coordination with the various agencies, Homeland Security, and specifically in our case, the city of Elizabeth, you know, which, which actually does have a, have a pretty significant plan, or at least has a system, you know, on getting things in order, so, we have stuff like terrorism insurance, you know, we cushion 10 grand, you know, but, you know, it's kinda recommended, so we do have that, in case a building is blown up by terrorists, and we do have that, we're insurance carriers, so, yeah, we do have it, you know, nice looking document, you know, and we're gonna review it some more, and, you know, it's available.
Do you think at some point we can get a copy of that?
Sure.
And then, so we could, you know, also know, like, what type of, what the policies are?
Yeah, we'll disseminate that.
Cool. I think that you guys did a great job. I heard a lot of positive feedback, also.
It looks like... We'll get some out.
Yeah, I'd be great doing, yeah, I'd like a copy, also.
That's, okay. Any other questions about the storm?
The only thing I'd like to say is, basically, down at 205, it was very important that each one of the residents had flashlights, you know, because even though we stayed downstairs, basically during the day, but when it was time to go upstairs, the hallway, because after a while, all the lights started going out, even the emergency lights started shutting down on us. So it was very important that we had flashlights. So, in the upcoming, yeah, we should make sure that seniors, at least seniors, have flashlights, so that they can, can see getting around, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we did, uh, I don't know, one day I was at Kennedy, we had to go up and went on both the batteries, because people had them, the batteries were... You gotta have a backup, you gotta have a bunch of batteries going on there.
Maybe we should wait until we kinda know what's going on, when you send a notice out, send a notice out along with the flashlight.
Well, we can do that. I would suggest, anybody, you should, you should have a flashlight, you have, at least some people should have something in there. Don't candles are really not recommended. I didn't know.
No, but you know, it was hard to get flashlights, because, like, a few of the residents, a few of the residents in my, in our building, they went out to get flashlights, you couldn't really get around.
You couldn't get flashlights.
They was charging arm and a leg. For little dollar flashlights, you know, and then another arm and leg for them to get batteries.
They run up on the gas, it makes you think they have a bunch of flashlights.
Is there any way the emergency lights in the high-rise buildings can be hooked up to a generator?
Well, they're...
Because they don't last very long, but you've got, it gets pitch black in the, in the stairway.
Yeah, they're, they're, they actually run the stairways. Generator power is the stairways.
Okay.
But, you know, it's...
Was that upstairs on our floor?
No, it stopped at the third floor. So they're moving forward, because remember, they had to put the lights, they had to string, not the emergency lights, but once they went off, the generators that we had, they was only able to put the lights up to the third floor.
The, like Farley, if you, you go, but you wonder, you know, I guess, the, all of the hallway lights at the end of the building are lit, you know, they're lit. I think there's a couple of lobby lights upstairs, too, but it's not enough, so we're gonna, you know, we're gonna spend some money, we're gonna look at it, we're gonna see if we're gonna put it on our existing system.
The light I put in all way?
Yeah, I was gonna say, Lisbon had this little light, little, little teeny light. I'm coming up the stairwell, and I get, I see this little teeny light at the end of the hallway. I get down there, because me and her apartment is the last two apartments. She has this little teeny light, she done put it up on the wall, so I guess you can see the light at the end of the tunnel. I thought somebody was down there holding the light, I'm trying to figure out. Why is they standing there, just holding this light? But then she had put it up there, so, and it stayed lit, believe it or not, that little light.
That's, that was there, that's one of those little lights that you put in your closet when you open it up?
Oh, yeah.
And the light come on.
People, people, yeah.
It was one of those.
I had some of them, people would buy them, it wasn't actually, you put batteries in in a circle.
Yeah, the tap light. I call it the tap light.
Yeah, you tap it and it comes up here.
Yeah, tap on. I had that, too.
Those would be nice, you know, to have something like that. Yeah.
We all see, have the candles, they burn by battery.
Oh, yeah. They have one of those.
And it don't take, it don't take the big batteries, you take the small batteries.
There's, yeah.
So, teenagers should be, you know, made aware that they can buy stuff like that and have it in their apartment.
Right.
Because I had no flashlight, but when I finished looking, I had lights everywhere.
Yeah, yeah. You gotta, and then you gotta have some blankets, you know, and we've got the blankets at the Red Cross, but, you know, they had to bring in that. The assembly room is actually pretty active at our buildings. She must, she's got a strong relationship with the, with the Red Cross, so a lot of things that happened, she was able to facilitate that. She had a meal one day, I think at Kennedy, so she did a net, she did a good job. She was out there doing everything, yeah, she did it.
Oh, okay. Old business? New business?
So, Bill, earlier this year, or last year, you handed us with the binder of, a list of goals, that we wanted to do, things that we wanted to accomplish this year. I wanted to see if maybe we can reexamine that for, like, the following meal, or meeting, or maybe even in January, and kinda like measure our success, and see, or what other areas still need some addressing.
Okay. We've done that some years in the past.
I thought it was a great idea.
Take the...
I thought it was a great idea.
And then report, have we done that? Yeah, so we'll do that for September, for the September meeting.
For the September meeting?
December.
Oh, December? Yeah, okay.
We gotta, I gotta do it, I gotta start, matter of fact, there's a report due for the city on a Wednesday, so we gotta accomplish that report, but, yeah, we've done all the bit, we've set the goals down, and then the debate accomplishments. I'll do that in the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Just wanted to raise, one of the things when I was at Kennedy Arms, is, you know, I was there a couple of times, I got calls a lot from there. I was asked by some of the residents for the, they used to have a officer at different times, and they were, some of the residents were wondering, is that gonna continue or resume, or, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I was talking to Kathy about this. She's making some changes. We all have it, it's on the weekends, I'd schedule it upstairs. It's expensive, and it's like, it's a half a million dollars a year, to be honest. And now, but that, that's like a double shift at Mad Black Manor, I think, a nightly shift at Farley, and two nights a week at the other two sites. So, I think there's gonna be some changes in it, but, yeah, Kennedy Arms will have something.
They won something, yeah, because that came up a couple of different residents there. They liked that, and they were talking about how other people walking in behind people that are coming to visit and that kind of thing.
It's always a problem, and it's always, is the officer inside the building, or is he outside the building? It's an only one you get into tonight, but, we'll continue that.
Yeah.
I just can't do it at the level that we've done it, you know, so...
They seem to express more, needing it more on the weekends.
Yeah, typically, we've done it Saturday, Sunday, and Friday, Saturday, Sunday, all of it, yeah, so we, we definitely have that. It would be, not as much as it was, but there will be some, some support. Usually at the senior buildings, the guys are there from like, it's one, they don't really work in team, eight to two, you know? And they're supposed to check the hallways and check all the stuff. It's a working process, but we'd rather have it than not have it.
Is there anything going on for Thanksgiving at any of the housing sites?
Somebody had, um, there, I don't know how many people went. You know, we encourage people to go to the event, the Hilton, the Sampson Center. Like, it was the last week. You know, there's buses, you know, that's a good event.
Shallow Baptist usually take names every year from all the, for all the senior housing. And they deliver the meals. So that's a good, they've been doing that for quite a while.
We had a couple, a couple of our contractors gave us some notice that we're gonna have some turkey to do about, I think it's tomorrow, right here, by that there. But, you know, we're, you know, that's probably the extent of it.
That's throughout the day or just also at twelve o'clock?
I don't know. I think Turkey's in the evening at the Community Center, if I pick them up.
Bill, I want to add one thing. At two oh five first week, is there any way we can get a sign that says, "All visitors must sign in"?
At two oh five? Yeah, you just gotta call me during the day. Go get, go get an official sign, you know, talk to them about this.
Down there, right there, on that thing, to make sure they're all signing and out.
Just have a chance to see. Well, I mean, how many buses are there? People upstairs?
Well, it's usually family members that come in and out the building, but now they done got so less. They don't even bother to go over and sign in, they just go straight to the elevator now and, you know. But there is still some that goes in and sign in, especially the home health care workers. We definitely need them to start signing in and signing out. Okay?
You ready? Number nine, authorizing the executive director to execute the closing documents for the redevelopment of Westminster Heights. It's at Oakwood Plaza, three eighty, Erbington Avenue. This is the mixed-use plan between the owners of Oakwood Plaza and the housing authority to provide an eighty-six unit building, brand new, at Oakwood Plaza. This would be the first project, and this allows us to execute all the paperwork. Quite complicated, but it follows, follows basically what we do in Route Six. I'll make a motion.
I'll check this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Is that gonna be known as Oakwood Plaza or Westminster Heights now?
Westminster Heights.
Everything is Westminster Heights now?
Yeah. The planning board approved it as Westminster.
Sounds better.
Like that, we'll move on.
Sometimes just a name change is good enough. You're coming down to your people, so.
Uh, number ten, avoiding a contract for A&E services for the community building expansion at Mad Black Manor. They're actually built out from the side of Mad Black Manor. There's a lot, you know, that is being requested of the facility, so we're gonna have some of the art people in there. And then this program is in there around the clock. The YMCA had a limited daycare program in there this summer, so we're gonna make it a bigger place. That's good for me.
Will they still be having rentals? Will that community will still be rented out?
I think they do a rental on a limited basis. Yeah, she has some things. She's not even in there anymore, by the way. We use all these back there. God speaks to us.
Phil, already started an excellent, Elizabeth Carter, she's a good friend of mine. Should I not vote on this one or does it matter?
It's not gonna affect the... All in favor of number ten? Okay, great. Warning contract for a purpose, for purchase order. Warning contract purchase order for installation of anoleum vinyl floor tiles for commercial carpeting at all haze sites. Some of this has to do with just putting carpet in different places because of theirs out. Some of it also has to do with a resolution in the back. It talks about the replacement of, the removal of asbestos floor tiles in apartment four Leonard. This allows us to have on full the company that will do, what is it, anoleum? Carpeting anoleum as well as floor tiles. Yeah, Elizabeth Carter, we've worked with them many, many times in the past, so they came up with the best thoughts. All in favor? We do this every year, working in contract with servicing of air conditions at all haze sites. The carrier corporation, some notable firm, not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. We have an option for a second or third year.
I'll check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, menu resolution number fifty-six forty-six. Contract number twelve C dash O two, miscellaneous engineering services contract at all sites. This is an increase that's required basically to do some A&E work for some of the damages that was done by Hurricane Sandy. So we just gotta amend our existing engineering contract so we can expedite the work and get it done.
The price on it, was it mostly because of damage by Sandy?
Yeah, it was. Yeah, the increase, it was.
Yeah, the amount is almost up. That's why. And it wasn't that much from the beginning with, so another twenty thousand.
Usually don't like to see it jump that much. But we had to, you know, these guys do a good job and we had to get that to work pretty quickly.
This is for the Farley Towers and Community Center and what have you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, this amends. Resolution fifty-seven oh eight, A&E services for lobby upgrades at Jable and Farley Towers and Ford Leonard Towers. This, this, basically because the time is extended on the project and it has to do with a rebid because the second bid, the first bid price is being made higher than what we wanted. So this is an extension of time and effort by the, by this particular A&E program. But, you know, we got the work started, it starts.
We have, it says design changes and...
Yeah, we had, we had some design changes that we wanted, yeah. We did. I'll move it. All in favor? Fifteen, amend purchase order number twenty-one four thirty-four. That is the removal and disposal of non-friable, whatever that is, asbestos floor tiles in apartments at Ford Leonard Towers. We had a purchase order to do this, but we actually found that more apartments had to be done. So by law, we can do a purchase order up to thirty-six. And so in order to complete all the apartments, we are going to take this purchase order to thirty-six thousand dollars.
So we just increase it then? We don't, we don't have to bid this?
No, well, there was a, there was, he got, he did get price quotes, you know, initially. You know, so now we're gonna keep the same...
Yeah, because this is now doubling.
It is, but there's no difference in the, let me check this out by law. There's no difference in the per unit based price. Hopefully this'll get the job done.
What was the original?
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen five. It almost seems like a good way to circumvent it.
I mean, you can look at it down, down, I, you know, it just, it did, this, this was underestimated. This was under, and he started work. You know, he's already done some of the apartments. And I guess the number of apartments that had to be done was, certainly not every one of them was underestimated. So, uh... You see here where we check recumulus policy in New Jersey public contracts law and also, after confirming with the Division of Local Government Services, the authority is permitted to increase the amount because it had not changed the scope of work or the length of the purchase order.
Who is this recommended by?
Who is that?
So it's recommended that the housing authority increase?
This is for, this is the purchasing, purchasing agent.
And this could not have been determined, this non-friable asbestos, we didn't have to know that this was there?
No, I, you know, we must, we had to know that. I don't think the extent of it was known. And I don't know, you know, why, you know, it was seventeen five to begin with. Obviously, that wasn't enough. It was, you know, somebody underestimated.
Is this because of additional apartments or is...
These are additional apartments.
So not just they were doing one apartment and then you found out another apartment needed?
Yeah, well, I know, I've done a couple of apartments and anytime now, there was some more apartments that needed it. You know, there was, there was some, some work, some replacement tile work in that number of these apartments a number of years ago. Apparently, not everyone was...
I'll check it.
All in favor? I'll make a motion in this one. All in favor?